Today we begin the conference order July 24th, various school meeting at 5:30 AM. At this time, the entertainment committee convenes executive session and non-organic session to discuss the approval of June 12th, 2024 executive session minutes for the bar and the 2014 state teachers, EASD, the smoking sector is bad to curate the concerned group and the nurses' bar minutes. The motion by Mr. Beal and Mr. Serra, Mr. Tommada, and Mr. Beal.
Aye.
Aye.
Mr. Beal.
Aye.
The chair and the floor will be announced soon and the assembly meeting will begin in the open session after the executive session at 6:30 AM.
Thank you.
And good evening. We reconvene the July 24, 2024 Regular School Committee Meeting at 6:32 PM. If you could all join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance of the United States of America to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. As we start with our announcement, tonight's Regular School Committee meeting will be televised and recorded. It may be viewed live on Comcast Channel 22 and on Verizon Channel 34, on youtube.com/ChuxburyTV. Under the Open Meeting Law, the public is permitted to make an audio or video recording of an open session at a public meeting. At this time, I would ask if anybody is recording tonight's meeting to please identify themselves. And seeing so, seeing nobody, I'd like to first welcome Nancy Milligan to her first School Committee meeting with us tonight. Welcome Nancy.
Thank you very much.
It's great to have you here tonight. Hope you feel at home and it's great to have you. We look forward to lots and lots of School Committee meetings in the future. Also hope that everybody's enjoying their summer. It's nice to see kids out in the playgrounds. Lots of work being done in the schools. Look forward to hearing all the work that's being done. Seeing no recognitions tonight, no Student Council Representative Report, no presentations. If it pleases the Board with our high school principal, Mr. Long here tonight. If I would welcome and be open to a motion to take Item 17A and B out of order.
Yeah, I'll make that motion.
Second. Okay, a motion by Mr. Russo, a second by Mrs. Bea Joni Smith. All in favor, please say aye.
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 Aye, okay, thank you. And that passes unanimously. So, Item 17A, Mr. Long, I invite you up to the podium to chat with us a little bit about the TMHS Student Council Overnight Field Trip Request. For as was.
So, every year, Ms. Glass takes the kids down, goes down the Cape usually to that. So, I would highly recommend voting that, approving that. The kids do a great job starting the year off with the freshman orientation. They take care of all that and they do numerous things throughout the year. So, I highly recommend that that be approved.
Any questions from the committee?
Just, just one. Is that travel being done with, combined with other districts? And/or is it, is it combined?
Yes, and now listed there, the information is there and then she can start planning the transportation and what have you. Mm-hmm. You can see the other districts that participate.
Yeah.
Together with Chuxbury.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions?
No other questions. I'll make a motion to approve the overnight Student Council Field Trip slated for March 5 through March 7, 2025.
Second. A motion by Mr. Russo, second by Mrs. Bea Joni Smith for a roll call vote. Mr. Moncada, how do you vote?
Aye.
Mrs. Anderson?
Aye.
Mr. Russo?
Aye.
Mrs. Bea Joni Smith?
Aye.
And I vote aye as well. And Mrs. Johnson, that's a unanimous vote.
Aye.
Thank you, Mr. Long. So, for Item 17B, that brings us to the TMHS PSAT Testing for grades 10 and 11.
I did give you sort of a one pager on some of the reasoning behind it. But in the past, the School Committee has paid for the PSATs for all sophomores. There was one day, it was sort of a half day in October that that was given. Last year, we went to an optional test date. Seventy-six kids ended up taking it. It was a better participation, taken more seriously because, you know, they had to register and sign up for it. Again, just some of the rationale, because so many schools have gone test optional, there's fewer kids that are taking it. It's gone down over 30% since 2020. That, that number's remained flat for the last three years. And again, you know, it's, it's an optional test that it's $18, not a super high burden for families. And I think, and I have spoken to a teacher and a parent regarding the sort of investment that the kids have when they own it, right? They want to take it, they want to do well. And I think by charging the $18 for the fee, that would help that along. And like I said, it's not a burden. We would make efforts, again, to make, to pay for those exams by any student that can't afford it. Any questions?
Any questions, comments?
We do, one other thing, I'm sorry. We do, we do have the kids pay for their AP exams and they do take the SAT exams as well. They, they have to take, pay for those as well, so.
And Madam Chair, our plan is to still facilitate for any student that does choose to take the PSATs, facilitate that during the school day, still here at school. That student's schedule would obviously be adjusted, but we don't have to adjust the whole school's schedule with the limited amount of students taking the PSATs now.
Right. The other thing was, when it was offered for sophomores, it was only sophomores. This, this also opens it up to juniors to take it as well. So, they can take it back to back years.
Mr. Russo, did you have comments?
Just, just a question, Madam Chair, through you. You mentioned that obviously a lot of schools, a lot of colleges are test optional right now. Obviously, at some point, that could potentially be revisited. Obviously, that's at a university level decision, their discretion. Is this set for just a one-year thing? Or is this going to basically be in perpetuity? And if so, could it be revisited if anything does change?
Sure. Well, your purview is to make decisions over the budget. So, this would be in perpetuity unless you changed, decided to change that again.
Okay.
And keep in mind, this is the practice SAT, not the SAT itself.
Okay. Okay, thank you.
Questions or comments?
No, I'm good, thank you.
I'm okay.
No. Okay, and I don't have any questions. I appreciate you coming here tonight. I, I think the information that you included in the packet is very thorough. My thoughts and my opinion is that $18 is certainly reasonable for a student who is pursuing college. The fact that you are still allowing for free and reduced and also any other student who's expressing hardship to make that petition to the school, the fact that it's still going to be facilitated by the school, I appreciate that as well. So, you know, I would entertain a motion to, you know, adopt Mr. Long's proposal.
I'll second.
I'll, I'll make the motion.
I'll second.
To, to approve the fee for the PSAT exam.
To, to?
To approve the fee for students and families, yeah.
Okay. So, and then second by Mrs. Anderson, Mr. Moncada, how do you vote?
Aye.
Mrs. Anderson?
Aye.
And Mr. Russo?
Aye.
And Mrs. Bea Joni Smith?
Aye.
And the Chair votes aye as well for. And the Chair votes aye as well, so for a unanimous vote for the $18 fee to be assigned to the PSAT. Thank you, Mr. Long.
We'll send an email out tonight to families to start registering then.
Great, thank you.
Aye, thank you.
All right, and that brings us to our Citizens Forum. We do have one person that has, right, am I right on this? 17, 18. Oh, Citizens Forum, yep. We do have one individual who has signed up tonight. Just some information about our Citizens Forum. It's our policy that citizens interested in speaking, sign in at the beginning, which we do have somebody who has signed in. We limit comments to three minutes by policy. We are open to comments for 15 minutes total. And as always, we are available between meetings to connect with residents. We're very flexible to do so. We would like the opportunity to hear the wishes and ideas of the public. Public comment is not a discussion, debate, or dialogue between the individuals and the School Committee. It is an individual's opportunity to express an opinion on issues within the School Committee's authority. These matters include the budget, performance of the Superintendent, the educational goals and policies of the Chuxbury Public Schools, or items on tonight's agenda. So the Committee does not respond to public comment in the meeting, and this is not the forum for an exchange of information with the Committee. But if you'd like to follow up after tonight's meeting, we invite you to please leave your comment information with Ms. Johnson on your way out. So we welcome Jacqueline Jocelyn. Please, we'd like to hear from you. Thank you.
Good evening. Thank you for providing this opportunity to speak during this open forum. I'm here to address the concerns with special education preschoolers in the DLC Development Learning Center who will be affected by the proposed changes to the Heathbrook in doing school preschool program hours, which is a proposed 45-minute delay to the start and end of each day. When my son was diagnosed with autism, initially I was afraid as I was entering into an unknown territory and had no idea how I could help my son. Thankfully, my husband and I had the help with the assistance of the remarkable employees from the state's Early Intervention Program and were referred to the Chuxbury DLC Program and a at-home ABA provider. Through the DLC Preschool Program and ABA services, my son has progressed so much. My husband and I can't thank his teachers and ABA counselor enough. For some of you who may not be aware, parents with special needs children need the services of the DLC Preschool Program plus outside services like ABA, speech, OT, for our children to have a chance of catching up and succeeding in their education and in society itself. The outside services help with the speed of progression with basic skills like speaking, communicating, writing, walking, following basic instructions that may come more natural to your typical preschooler. I know some of you might be thinking, how could a proposed 45-minute difference in start and end times to the preschool program impact parents and special needs students? It can't be that bad, and we're giving them over a month's notice. Well, I'm going to list the challenges this change would cause. First, obtaining outside services like ABA, OT, and speech and other services can take months to receive as there are long wait lists, can average six months or longer, as well as the lack of availability of these services. Parents already have these services aligned with the current schedule of the DLC program. Therefore, changing the schedule would mean parents having to make changes to our outside schedule, which could mean forfeiting our current schedules and go back to the waitlist with our current providers or seek out new ones. Next, having to forfeit these services for an unknown period of time is putting our special needs children at risk for regression or slower progression in various areas. In addition, parents would lose the ability of our parent training sessions to essentially help us assist our children progress in the skills that they are working on in the classroom in these outside services. After all, in order for skills to progress and be maintained, it needs to be taught in all areas, in and outside of the classroom. Most young children, especially special needs children, are at their best in the morning. Special needs children get overstimulated and burnt out quicker later in the day. Therefore, having a later start to the day sets these children up to fail as they perform better in the earlier hours of the day. So, when you think to yourself, 45 minutes can't be that big of a deal or affect parents and students, I ask you to consider the statement I just read to you and urge you to consider the negative impact this would have on our special needs students. I trust that the Chuxbury Public School Administration wants the best for all of our students, even the ones that need more services and attention to have a successful education. So I'm asking you, please do not make it harder for us to receive these services that help them succeed in our society. Thank you.
Thank you. Was that everybody tonight that wanted to speak? Thank you. Okay, we have our approval of minutes?
Sure. So, let me pull it up. Do you make a motion to approve the minutes from our June 12, 2024 meeting?
I'll second.
Okay, all those in favor, please say aye.
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 Motion passes. Now we have our submission and payment of bills. We have a few of them.
Yeah. So, point of order, can we take these in one motion if I list the dates and amounts, or do I have to do them individually?
Individually.
Okay. Sure. So, so I'll make a motion to approve the School Department payroll for the period ending 6/14/2024 to be approved and certified in the amounts and categories as shown, for a total amount of $912,848.62.
I'll second that. Madam Chair, through you?
Yes.
Can I just get clarification on balloon payroll? What is that in reference to?
Many of our 10-month employees choose to take their summer checks in a lump sum.
Say no more.
Yeah.
Understood.
It's a different phrase for a lump sum.
Got it. Okay.
We're not buying balloons.
We have a motion by Mr. Moncada, second by Mr. Russo, to approve and certify the balloon payroll period ending June 14, 2024, in the total amount of $912,848.62. For a roll call vote, Mr. Moncada?
Aye.
Mrs. Anderson?
Aye.
Mr. Russo?
Aye.
Mrs. Bea Joni Smith?
Aye.
And I vote aye as well, for a unanimous vote.
Okay. Move the School Department payroll for the period ending June 20, 2024, to be approved and certified in the amounts and categories as shown, for a total amount of $1,539,439.69.
I'll second that.
I have a motion by Mr. Moncada and a second by Mr. Russo, to approve and certify the payroll period ending June 20, 2024, for the period ending June 20, 2024, in the total amount of $1,539,439.69. Mr. Moncada?
Aye.
How do you vote? Mrs. Anderson?
Aye.
Mr. Russo?
Aye.
Mrs. Bea Joni Smith?
Aye.
And I vote aye as well.
I move the School Department payroll for the period ending July 3, 2024, to be approved and certified in the amounts and categories as shown, for a total amount of $1,50947.79.
I'll second that.
A motion by Mr. Moncada, second by Mr. Russo, to approve and certify the payroll period ending July 3, 2024, in the total amount of $1,50947.79. Mr. Moncada, how do you vote?
Aye.
Mrs. Anderson, how do you vote?
Aye.
Mr. Russo?
Aye.
Mrs. Bea Joni Smith?
Aye.
And I vote aye as well.
And lastly, I move the School Department payroll for the period ending July 18, 2024, to be approved and certified in the amounts and categories as shown, for a total amount of $1,188,927.
I'll second that.
I have a motion by Mr. Moncada and a second by Mr. Russo, to approve and certify the payroll period ending July 18, 2024, in the total amount of $1,188,927. Mr. Moncada, how do you vote?
Aye.
Mrs. Anderson?
Aye.
Mr. Russo?
Aye.
And Mrs. Bea Joni Smith?
Aye.
And I vote aye as well, for a unanimous vote on all payroll votes. And now for our Superintendent and Staff Reports, Mrs. Terry O'Regan.
Thank you, Madam Chair. It's hard to believe we're about halfway through the summer already. It's been a very busy past five weeks since school ended. Summer school and other enrichment opportunities are well underway in our schools, serving hundreds of students. The Assistant Superintendent will give you more information on the enrollment of our programs and some of those enrichment opportunities when they conclude. On that topic, tomorrow, we will be visiting Strongwater Farms to observe a service learning project our own high school, summer school students are working on. You're welcome to join us at 10:00 AM. Last week, the Assistant Superintendent and I attended the Massachusetts Association of School Superintendents Executive Institute, where we heard from both the Acting Commissioner of Education, Russell Johnson, and the Secretary of Education, Patrick Tutwiler. The theme of this year's Executive Institute was to believe in the power we hold in our district leadership positions to truly influence pathways forward for all students and families. Dessie shared a new catalog of aligned supports that leaders can use to support their staff and supports to wrap around us as district leaders in doing this very complex work on behalf of our students and our communities. Dr. Manny Scott, if you've ever heard of the movie The Freedom Writers, he is the writer and one of the central characters in that movie, was a moving and inspiring speaker who reminded us that our work, our power, our life is about service. It's about loving children and the people we service, so that every student feels that school is the place they belong as their path to a successful and meaningful life. We also heard from Amanda Ripley, who coached us through managing hard conflict and good conflict. She gave us some strategies to use as we may be approaching some challenging times. Most of all, the Massachusetts Executive Institute is a great time to network with other district leaders, to build that network of support when we need it in this work. And I want to truly thank you, Madam Chair, and members of the Committee for allowing us this type of professional development, so we can grow in our roles and better serve our school community. In your consent agenda, you will see the long list of transition events for all grade levels in our schools that we are offering throughout the summer and into the, into the fall. Actually, some of them in the spring as well. This will assist our new families and students with the transition at Chuxbury Public Schools, maybe to a new grade or even a new school within the district. We will once again share this edited, this, this list continues to update with more explicit dates. We'll share this out to our TPS community and to our new parents of students in our schools. In your side packet, you'll also see, and you may forget this acronym called the NAP, the National, let me get to my document on the NAP, right? It's right here. NAP stands for the National Assessment of Educational Progress. Again, you'll hear us call it the NAP. Often, we are chosen to participate in the NAP, maybe in Grade 4 or Grade 8. But this year, as a first, as far as I can remember, our Grade 12 students will participate in the NAP for mathematics and reading. This is an online test. We have a couple of steps in this phase first to just see if our online network and our technology, the, the school technology survey, if it helps us qualify to do this test. The senior window of assessment will happen around March before our seniors leave, if they're participating in senior projects. And people may say, well, what is the NAP for? It's the results of the NAP done in these grades throughout the country that serve as the results to our nation's report card. So we've contributed to that report card in the past. When we receive those results, I'll be sharing those with you. They won't be results just on our students, but, you know, how, how, how the nation did. And finally, as you said, Madam Chair, sitting next to me is our new Assistant Superintendent. And I too would like to welcome and introduce, for those who maybe didn't meet Nancy in the spring when we introduced her, Ms. Nancy Milligan, our new Assistant Superintendent. That concludes my report for tonight.
Thank you. Next, we, Mrs. Milligan.
Thank you, Mrs. Garabedian, and the Committee for having me here tonight, and I'm excited to join the district. I've been here and completed my first month within the district. I have set up individual meetings with each school administration and will be visiting campuses. I look forward to continuing to meet all staff as they come in over the summer and then again on opening day. During the first month, I have been supporting and planning the opening day, sitting down with the directors to understand the nuances of the departments and their needs and listening to the work that has been accomplished to understand our future goals. It has been a busy and exciting summer so far. Last week, I was also able to attend the Mass Association of School Superintendents Executive Institute, and I thank you for allowing me to attend. The Institute tied nicely with the district's theory of action, reinforcing our shared commitment to innovative, inclusive, equitable, and student-centered instruction that prioritizes positive academic, social, and emotional outcomes with environments that foster that sense of belonging. Thank you for that, and I look forward to supporting the excellent work in the district to support our students, families, and staff. For tonight, in the consent agenda, you will find a voucher. For this voucher, we want to thank Mrs. Karen Baker O'Brien, again, for mentoring interns in the Counseling Department and supporting these collaborations with local universities, creating wonderful opportunities and partnerships for our district teachers and students. The, Mrs. Baker O'Brien has received this voucher from Merrimack College for recognition of her work and for one graduate course. So, thank you, Mrs. Baker O'Brien. And that's all I have for my first month on the job. I'll have a lot more next month for you.
Thank you. Are there any questions for either Mr. Terry O'Regan or Mrs. Milligan?
I have one. The transition event document, is, how's that being disseminated?
So individually, principals were sharing that out through this more, but there were some dates to be determined. So through the district, we'll get that out to all of our parents of students at our schools. We also, as new families register, Elise Edson, our registrar, shares what's happening at the school. So whether it's, you know, the new times in our calendars and those types of events with families, so multiple ways. It's, it's always hard to catch the new, especially the newest of families, who don't really know where to look for all that information. But once we get contact information, we blitz out emails like that.
Mrs. Anderson, any questions?
I'm good, thank you.
Mr. Russo?
No, not this evening, thank you.
Just wanted to get to, again, on the transition events. And I know it's come up in some CPAC meetings. We talked with Ms. Theret about some special attention with some of our special ed families to make sure there's some time carved out, I guess, for them to interact. And then also on potential transportation needs. I think we've talked about this in the past before, some of the concerns that come up as we near the start of school with transportation, especially for families that utilize fan services or stuff like that. And kind of keeping that in mind when we're talking about these type of communications that are going out. I didn't go line by line on the
That's okay.
Transition events calendar, but.
I, I can tell you I shared this personally as well with our leaders of the CPAC, and we'll do that again, because I know there may be nuances and the question about is there sensory time available and things like that. And we certainly want to hear, get their input and feedback, because this is something that was asked of us, not only from the CPAC, but other parents. And it's a lot of work on the principal's part, it's really good work, but we also want it to work for families. So we'll share it out with them again.
My only thought, I, my only thought on this, I think there was just such a challenge that last night before the first day of school, or two nights before the first day of school, where people felt as though they didn't have a plan. Is there maybe some thought to, on Monday? You don't have a plan by Monday. What's the, is there a plan for, if there's no plan on Monday? I, I think that's my, that's my worry, is that we'll have any sort of repeat for that situation, should it, I hope, never occur again. That some of the special education people who are expecting a van that just don't know. That window of, should we be ready at 7?
Communication for Wednesday is what you're saying to me, then. Okay, that early communication on.
So if you haven't heard by, what's the date you should hear by? I guess that's what the, the parents should know. What is the time and date parents should know by? And if you haven't heard by such and such a date, that's when they should be reaching out.
Yeah, Friday before school, we should, people should have heard something.
So there's two types of transportation communication. If you remember, and, and this happened last year, some of the drivers that were new, and I don't mean the big yellow buses, I mean some of our van drivers, did not personally reach out to families to go through those details. And we, Mr. Libby and I spoke today about that middle of August time. Let's make sure we have a clear plan with not only our Chuxbury Transit, but the out-of-district van drivers too. Because it was really sticky at the beginning of the year without enough drivers. Has everybody been communicated with? Do they know that time of the pickup? So we have our, our, you know, focus on that too. But I don't know, and, and that could be something we continue to add, an update to these transition plans, is that.
plans, is that. But transportation, you'll hear more of in August, but the typical time is mid-year on the bus routes and van routes in town, and then very shortly before school starts on the out of town.
Last year too was the first year that the bus company had unionized. So they had a different process for signing the vans, where the employees got to bid on the routes by seniority. It wasn't typically, it was more of an interactive process with the, between the drivers and the management. And it was, there was a lot of uncertainty on how that was going to play out. So I think it dragged on longer than it normally would. I think that won't be a holdup this year.
No, I hope not.
More familiar with how it's going to play out.
Such a great job. Really, I think, kind of backtracking and fixing after the fact, but I think maybe in looking forward, just letting people know, you don't need to worry until, you haven't heard by Friday.
Yes.
Yeah.
And that still gives you Monday and Tuesday to sort that out.
Get something fixed.
Okay, that's helpful.
I just have one more thing on that, just to piggyback on that. And some, I think, for some of the families, some of the things we've heard, some drivers are excellent, they, everyone has their cell phone number and they'll tell you this and that, and then the other thing. Some people don't. So if I'm talking to my friend over here and he's like, oh, my driver texted me this morning. Maybe as long as families know that they'll hear from the district. I think, like you're saying, like they'll know by Monday. At least they'll know that the district is contacting them. And that way, they don't have that unknown, because it's hard, because I know that some drivers are just, they just have a different protocol. So making sure that the families are aware of that, so that when they're talking to each other or in CPAC meetings or wherever, and I'll bring it up in our meetings, but just because your neighbor's van driver texts every morning and says I'm five minutes away doesn't mean that that's how all of them are.
Yeah, I know, even this summer, Candace was very hands-on with the transportation. So I anticipate that again when we get to the startup for the fall.
Which went very smoothly, the summer school process and all of those details. I'm really, really proud to say that. I know I glazed over, we have hundreds and hundreds of kids, we have different programs, and it went very well.
That's nice to hear.
Yeah.
Is the summer transportation, that collaborative transportation that we share with other towns, or is that just Tuxbury Transportation?
It's both still. The out-of-district is, we share with Bellwicker and Chumpsford, and the in-district is just our folks with Tuxbury Transit.
I guess that brings us to, Mr. Russo, your update.
Kind of thought I already went. So we have, many of our summer projects are really in full swing now. As the Chair mentioned earlier, our WIN HVAC project is progressing. Unit ventilators have been, unit vents have been purchased for the entire project. A lot of cabinetry work's been done at the schools. Ceiling work with ducts and work of that nature is progressing well. We're hearing good things from the contractor and our architectural consultant that that project's on a good course to be completed next month. The Heathbrook renovation project is also underway. There's kind of two components to that. There's the insurance piece that our insurance folks are still working on, that we kind of put on hold from last summer's flood. Some of the work they couldn't get to before school started, being done in our main office area. That started this week, kind of in earnest with our vendor there. And then the window replacement HVAC in the five classrooms. They're beginning to remove some ceiling material down in that area, so we'll start to see some progress in that area as well. We have two kitchen projects going on right now at the Dewing and the Heathbrook. Upgrades to coolers, dishwashers, just overall improvement to space usage in those kitchens. Pretty major work going on in those kitchens. It's going to improve the work areas for our folks at those schools. And inside of our business office, busy closing out fiscal '24, opening up accounts for fiscal '25, kind of getting our budget aligned with how our personnel eventually landed. So we'll be looking for, to do sort of similar to what we did last year, budget amendment in September, once we have all of our personnel in place. And also, yeah, evaluating whether we need to do a warrant article for the town meeting in October. Our grant work is very busy right now. We have a lot of summer grants going on that are supporting a lot of these summer programs. And they hit fast, spend the money, they start July 1st. We have to get the money in place and spend a lot of it by August 31st. So it's a kind of a hectic time in grant land, but it's all going well, and we're working with the town hall on making sure those programs get funded and make it through the middle of August, when most of them wrap up. And that's pretty much where we are in business office land.
Okay, any questions or comments?
What did I see going on at the center school today? Like, can some work on the second floor?
Yeah, the center school, they, we were experiencing some leaks with that window wall that's sort of in the, what are those areas called?
The group team spaces?
Team spaces.
They're like the neighborhood in between team spaces, yeah.
That were, they had continual leaks in there. They got it stopped, but the contractor wasn't happy with the long-term prospect for the solution. It hadn't leaked in probably the last nine months of the year, but they thought, there was a potential for it to spring up again. So they got the window folks to come back and design a different flashing solution up above the top of the window. But it required taking out the whole window and shutting down that area of the school. There's so much going on at the school, we were a little hesitant to let a project that size go on. But given their willingness to do it, the project's wrapping up, closing out, we thought we better get it done while they're still willing to do it. So we kind of, it was kind of cropped up at the last minute, honestly, with the general contractor, Consigly, offering to come in and fix that. And it was sort of an issue we didn't even know we had, because like I said, it hadn't leaked for a while. But if they're telling us it could be an issue down the road, we thought it's best to get it fixed now while they're willing to do it and it's on the project's dime.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, Mrs. Anderson?
Just a quick question. Do you expect any disruption to the beginning of school at the WIN or Heathbrook because of the construction projects?
No, the Heathbrooks, you know, it's still in that isolated area. And the WIN, we're hearing that it's progressing fine. We don't expect to see any delay in having it operable from the start of school at this point.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Russo?
Just two things. I sort of got the answer about the Heathbrook piece. So the teachers and the staff that were displaced last year, they're going to remain displaced to start this year, but there's a chance at some point that could go back.
Pretty much stayed put. We're targeting December vacation
Break, okay.
For a move back to occupy that space.
And then, excuse me, second question is just, you brought up potentially the town meeting in October and potentially warrant. Obviously, there's some, there's no decision that had been made there just yet, but you know, in terms of magnitude of that and, you know, one-time expenses of sorts, I'm assuming that those are the things that you're looking at potentially, go to town meeting with the warrant article.
No, I'm looking at some operating
Operating as well.
Potentially this year. If our, if some of the trends continue the way they came about at the end of last year, we may need to reevaluate our overall budget.
Okay. And you're specifically referring to transportation?
Unexpected costs associated with.
Yeah. Yeah. We spent a lot in some, with some contracted service providers last year. We've actually found a few employee hires that we've already brought in that we expect will reduce that number and be a net savings. When we pay contractors for some of those services, we pay at an inflated rate. We just talked about one, bringing one on to head our BCBA home services as a supervisor, working on some logistics about how we could do that. But it looks like that would be a big savings for the district and an improvement in how we deliver those services at the same time. So there are a few good things happening fiscally, but it was just the end of the year. Last year, it seemed like there was a lot of big unexpected expenses coming in at the end of the year.
Madam Chair, I didn't think it was appropriate, we're still in the midst, but I'll do my best to share new staffing, new positions, new staffing in the, at the August meeting, as well as some of these unforeseen positions that we've needed to bring on. So you can, you can see just really that sort of new reorg, but moreover, the new positions.
Great.
Thank you. Thanks, Mr. Libby.
So this might be a little bit of overlap with some stuff from old business, new business, and you, Mr. Libby, with the Heathbrook renovations, is that going to have any impact and any new teachers coming in? How will that look there? Are we looking at that yet?
Well, we just posted for a new kindergarten teacher. And I haven't had an opportunity yet to meet with Ms. Garish to find out where are we expecting to put that teacher. But remember, we reorged a kindergarten and others to go to second grade because we needed extra teachers. I assume we have that out in space, but that would be something I have to work through with Ms. Garish, yeah.
All right, yeah, that was. Okay, thank you. Mr. Libby, my only question, the, it might have been one of our end of the year meetings, you had some potential bus at the LRTA considerations. Did that ever pan out?
Not this round. The vehicles that we checked out at the last offering weren't really
But they're continuing to kind of
Oh, yeah.
So, yeah. But they do have two vehicles that we're keeping an eye on that are soon to be taken off the road, that when they do, they're going to let us know that we will have an interest in those two vehicles. But this last auction they had, we weren't interested in bidding on the vehicles that they had at that time.
Just curious, thank you. Thanks for the update. All right, and thank you to the staff doing all the work, since the buildings look very busy.
Yeah.
All right, in terms of consent agenda, any other questions or thoughts? Want to entertain a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented this evening in our packet.
I'll second. Okay, a motion by Mr. Russo, second by Mrs. Bea Joni Smith. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Okay, motion passes. And for the school committee member reports, for the Tuxbury CPAC, Mrs. Bea Joni Smith or Mrs. Anderson, any updates?
I'm getting some dates right now. So the last meeting was in June, June 20th. It was a virtual meeting, it was a pretty small meeting, but they did go over some plans to try to have a meetup over the summer. And some of the upcoming meetings for next year, we've laid out pretty much the whole year, I think. There's always some question on meeting dates when it falls around April vacation and the TMHS theater production, because sometimes there's overlap there. But our first meeting will be in September on the 19th to a general business meeting.
Thank you. Mrs. Anderson, anything you want to add?
No, thank you.
Okay. Wellness advisory would also be Mrs. Anderson and Mr. Moncada.
We, there were no meetings, but there was a meeting scheduled for October 24th still.
And policy subcommittee?
Yeah, we are also on sort of summer hiatus with our policy subcommittee. So we'll move in maybe to the last proposal that we do have, which is of course the general homework policy. It's our second and final reading, and so it does require approval.
Okay, and did you want to move right into that?
Yeah, we should.
Okay. Please do.
So, oh, I thought I was, I thought I already did. Yeah, so I'll make a motion to approve, which is in our second and final reading, policy IKB, our general homework policy for this evening.
I'll second that, and I just want to thank you both and everyone for all the hard work on this one.
All right, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay, and that motion passes.
Yeah.
Good to have that one behind us.
Yeah, that was a big one. And again, I know we've said it when, you know, Jason Wustamp was here, and this was a heavy lift. Felicia Whitstone, you know, thank you, Mr. Terry Regan, for your work on this. This was a lot of effort in terms of, you know, just some research, working with your staff, getting feedback from parents, talking to students, working with us. So, you know, it'll be interesting to see what the feedback is when people kind of work with this in action. So, thank you.
You're welcome. And if I could just add, we're kicking off our, and you'll hear more of this in August and certainly at our retreat, but it's this homework, new homework policy, improved instructional supports, and that new D cap that we'll be sharing with you, that we will kick off our opening day, as well as our first day of PD with our staff and digging deep, informing, and then talking about how it's implemented in the classroom at different grade levels. So we have work to do with the staff and our students on this now, and communication to parents as to how it's playing out at school. So this was a lot of work, but now we implement it. So we're looking forward to working with everyone to do that.
Okay, great. Okay, now moving on to old business for enrollment.
Okay, so what I have in front of you here is an update to our enrollment as we are right now in July. So it looks a little different, and let me explain that to you. If you look at the red numbers, that is either our preregistration numbers or anticipated totals. Let me tell you what I mean by that. If you look at grade two, we have 302 students. We call preregister or anticipated, because that's what we ended grade one with. However, we've had five new registrations, so we're expecting a total of 307 students in grade two. If we look at the totals, so go all the way over to the right-hand side, down the bottom, right now, our expected total school enrollment, grades preschool through grade 12-plus is 3,159. Last year, we ended the year with 3,231. Now, let me just give you a little context. If we were to subtract out preschool, our total K through 12 students or K through 12-plus is 3,028. Nezdeck had us slated at 3,091. NESDEC had us slated at 3,091. So we're a little under the NESDEC projections. I don't know what that means, except for to tell you, August can be a busy time, too. So we're watching those numbers. We, we did see, and you knew this was coming, look at our ninth grade class, you know, that's a small class. Our grade two class is up high. So we're, we, we see the fall off later in years, but we're, we are seeing a little bump younger, waiting to see what kindergarten really looks like. Kindergarten's always a wild card, because not all students go to kindergarten. Not all students come to kindergarten with us. Some go to private. So, and, and when, as you, we referred to, when August 1st happens, you know, a lot of people wake up as to where their children are going to school. What we don't have in here are any students that may have withdrawn at this time or moved out, and we'll know that as we get closer to the year. So you might wonder why we would give you the next grid, which has all zeros in it, because we are tracking our averages in every class, but we haven't populated this yet. Our data rolls over around mid-August. So parents will really find out, you know, the classroom, I know parents are asking, and once August 1st comes, everybody really wants to know, but it's generally that second week of August or the end of that second week in August that we've rolled over all of our old data and populated all of our new data. So I can assure parents, it's coming, and that mid-August time is really busy for all of us, but that's when we all get excited around bus routes and classrooms and teams and all of that. So that just shows you where we're at. I'm not even sure all the new classes have been added to this document yet, but when we come back in August, you'll get more accurate information.
Any questions, Mr. Moncada?
No, I mean, I, Mrs. Englekin still listed as a first grader here, so obviously.
All of that, and we're getting new hires, so all of that will get populated appropriately with the appropriate class size.
Yeah, I'm all set for that.
Mrs. Anderson? No, I'm good, but I'll be interested to see the copy when we get it in August with the populated info.
I can assure you, our class sizes still look really great, and I've been working closely, Mr. Long's still in the audience, with the high school to make sure that with the reductions and changing and reorganization with new positions, that our high school numbers are tight, too. And I'm really proud of the work that they're doing around that.
Thank you.
Mr. Russo?
No, I, no, no questions at this time. I'm just, just trying to really absorb and take this in at the moment, so thank you. All set for now.
Mrs. Bea Joni Smith?
I have just one, and maybe this is better for August, but I'd still like to see the capacity at the schools. So with how many students we have, what's our capacity? I think that'll help. I think we talked about this at the last meeting, especially with this building, long-term building committee that's going to be put in place. I think it would help to see how many students are in the school, what's the capacity for the school, and where we're at there. I just think that that would be helpful to see and communicate to.
Definitely something to look at with the school facility study committee.
Yes.
Let's see if we can, we can arrange to have that side by side. Not sure it will, capacity, we'll get those numbers as, as allowed by the fire department.
Right.
And then let's look at, the study committee's going to have to do a long, long deep dive. What does that mean in a functional school in today's day and age?
Right. I just know that it's, it's, it's in the community, you know, as baby rumor of whatever it might be, oh, we're over capacity here, we're under capacity here. I think it would be helpful to have that, so that we know what it is, we're tracking it, we're aware of.
Okay.
How many people are in our buildings, how many students are in our building, even taking the Heathbrook. Obviously, the Heathbrook is reduced capacity right now because we're short X classrooms.
Right.
So we can't occupy those. So that also comes into play, I understand, but yeah, I think that's an important look.
Thank you.
Okay. And no questions for me. Thank you.
Okay. All right. Would you like me to move on?
Yes, please.
All right. The next item in our old business agenda is, again, that full, final, maybe, we say final, but with a calendar, sometimes things are, you know, move, but this is our, the back page of our calendar. As you know, throughout negotiations, a big topic of discussion has been the start and stop time of all of our schools and how we arrange the schools, the grade bands, to be most efficient with transportation, services, and what have you. So what you see, I'm going to draw your attention to that back page, the second page, and thank you, Ms. Johnson, because she cleaned this up quite a bit. I think it's nice and easy to follow. But if you look at under the legend of those days off, and as a reminder, those blue days added to the calendar was a memorandum of understanding that we went into with our teachers' union on those six additional kindergarten through grade four half-days, early release days. So that's why the, the legend of the dates have those blue dates. They align to those new six half-days that we added. If we look at the school hours, you know, we've come to agreement that the high school and middle school are now on the same start and stop time, 7:30 to 1:50. That's the student day. The, each school will have its own fleet, and when I say the fleet will be split, so there are bus runs that are just for the middle school and bus runs just for the high school. And Mr. Libby will butt in if I'm telling any fibs here. And then what we have, which is the biggest, one of the biggest pieces of change here is that the Ryan and the Center schools, because that's one big campus, and they'll use our entire bus fleet and van fleet, are on the same start and stop time. We have received, and actually, we've received quite a bit of positive feedback here that this is nice to have the same campus on the same time, so families with that wide grade range are functioning off the same schedule. And then what you see is the Doing and Heathbrook have maintained, although slightly different than what it was last year, the same start and stop times. And what we've done here, much like the high school and Do, when, is they will have their own separate bus fleet and van fleets. And what this allows the Heathbrook and Doing to do is now really be more efficient in the functioning of their school. Vans that go just to the Heathbrook can now serve as all Heathbrook students only. For example, it could be a preschooler that needs a van in the morning, along with a kindergartner and a first grader, rather than running multiple separate runs all day, which was inefficient. And now for limited vans that we sometimes have, the Heathbrook can use the vans for their neighborhood or their town section. The same with the Doing. Other than that middle-of-the-day van run, taking our preschoolers home or picking up the others, they're running in the same time of the school day. So there's that. The second thing that the Heathbrook and the Doing looked at is the nurses and the service providers to our special education students run on one schedule. We didn't have nurses in the morning. And, or, for example, our custodial staff, our nurse staff, our teaching staff are on one set schedule. So now we've aligned all the program in the school to be on that set schedule, even though there's slight differences in their start and stop. So this is a change, and we do fully acknowledge this may impact some families. We're hearing feedback that the impact is also positive, because now, example, at the, at the Center and Ryan also fits for the Doing. If I have a kindergarten or Anna preschooler, I'm on the same morning schedule, and then I'm on the same afternoon schedule. So there's nuances to this, and there is a link there for parents to visit if they're confused. Certainly welcome to call their school. The early release times now align a little bit better as well. And I will say that below, so once we get to the school schedule, down below, our open house schedule and our conference schedules have now been realigned to appropriately be placed once report cards have been issued. I also want to bring your attention, and I think it's worth noting because much discussion has been had about conference nights and not enough time for our parents, that we want our parents to understand that while there's scheduled nighttime conference appointments, and they can be limited, there's no doubt, that parents are urged to make appointments to discuss their child's progress with teachers, guidance counselors, or principals whenever they need throughout the school year. That hasn't changed, but sometimes I think parents that may be new to our district don't realize these aren't the only two nights in a school year, where we're expecting parents to, you know, converse with their teacher as needed. So once again, this is the final piece, really, of our district calendar for next school year. You vote on the totality of it, and, because it sets our schedules, and if there should be any changes along the way, we would definitely bring those to you and communicate them out prior to making those changes.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any questions or comments, Mr. Moncada?
Other than, I, a lot goes into this, like you said, and it's not one thing, it's multiple things, there's many moving pieces. I mean, we had a resident here, obviously, and a parent. We're all receptive, I'm sure, to that, but it's, it's, it's difficult. There's so many things you have to juggle, and not everyone will be happy. It's just unfortunate, but that's the way it goes, I think.
We think it's more efficient. We definitely know that the real tail that wagged this whole piece is transportation. Once we have the start and stop times of the school, that's, and Mr. Libby can certainly talk to that better than I can, but it's always our concern. You know, do we have enough buses, do we have enough vans, and then the efficiency of their routes. We feel this is going to really help that.
Mrs. Anderson?
Not a question, but just about communication. If we can just send out a special communication once this is approved tonight, so that parents know and they can start planning. I know many have been waiting for this meeting to.
Yeah.
Understand what the new schedule is. And then I think even more key is when, when the bus schedules can get out, and I know that we talked about mid-August, but this, this is going to be a little bit different for folks, just making sure we can get those out as soon as possible for families.
I don't think we can over-communicate it when there is a change, because 10 minutes even can be a difference, getting out the door if you're a parent. And we will, the principals were proactive a month ago, we'll send it out again. I think they intend to do that even tomorrow, and we can, we can keep communicating it, especially once those bus times change, you know.
Thank you.
Appreciate that.
Okay. Mr. Russo?
So just because the preschool thing did come up tonight in Citizens Forum, so right now, we're kind of leaving this, that this will be updated tomorrow, so there's still some, I could, it's a PDF, so I didn't click on this, there's no link to click on per se, but this will be updated with some further information after tomorrow?
Yes, the principals have already sent that out, but they knew that, that you approved the start and stop time of every school.
Right.
And now all the programs within a school live within that start and stop time, even though there may be new, and you remember our negotiations.
Yeah.
That were tentatively agreed on, on preschool teachers, middle of the day. So there's some other details there that will get communicated from the Doing and the Heathbrook specifically, but yes, they will get that out tomorrow. We will push that out often. We'll have a summer newsletter again earlier in August, and, and I think transportation one is one we can't over-communicate.
Mm-hmm. Yeah, I have a couple.
So the first one is a strange one, and it's very easy. We say, we, obviously, the high school is the high school, we say the Ryan, we say the Center, the Doing, the Heathbrook, but we say middle school. And it sounds very silly, but changing that to when might help some people. I've gotten that question before.
Ah.
It's a very weird one, but it, it has come up that we don't name it. I don't, I've gotten the question three times, and I think that that, it's just a, it's just a thing.
Listen, I say it all the time, nothing's obvious to the uninformed, and that's good information for us, that if it's confusing people, we should fix that.
Because I've gotten, well, we, the junior high, which is the middle school.
Yes.
So if you just put the name, maybe that'll.
Yeah, point taken.
Remove that question. In terms of the preschool change, it's more of a logistics on drop-off and pickup, because I know that parents who have done preschool drop-off have, especially at the Heathbrook, I'm not as familiar as the Doing, but it typically had went through that bus loop, so that could probably cause some potential confusion for parents. So when you're thinking of this communication that's going out, really clarifying how that drop-off is going to work, especially for veteran parents who have done it in the past.
I'm sorry that I forgot to mention that Ms. Bosworth, Ms. Gerish, and Mr. Harding, and Ms. McGinnis, all of our principals, preschool through grade six, are already working on not only their diagrams, but their, I forget what they call it, their video of them in their car, showing a parent how we're driving, paying close attention to the different schools, thinking through the drop-off at the Ryan now and the Center and the traffic patterning, and where our SROs and/or our teachers that do that duty will be positioned. All of that is being thought through. In fact, we got a draft from Ms. Bosworth already that we're going to work through with her. Yes, that will be over-communicated, not only through email and the newsletters, but at open houses again, and, and it takes time to train people on those traffic patterns. So we get it, and if you were there as a three-year-old, now you're there at a four-year-old, it might look a little different. Or you were Center and Ryan, it may look a little different next year, too. We'll get that out. And we always just keep working it until we feel it's as perfect as it can get. We also are cognizant, we don't want traffic backing up unpleasant, so we're, have that mindset, too.
Yeah. Little legs getting out of cars in the big loop now is a, is a, is a different thing to think of, car seats and boosters or whatever.
Yes, I'm glad you brought that up.
Yeah. And then another one is before-school care with preschool, with this, is Alphabet open to preschool enrollment, or is?
It works the other way around. So it's specific that four-year-olds go in the morning so they can do an extended piece of the day. Three-year-olds come in the afternoon. I don't believe there's morning, because the school's full, but I'd, I'd have to, I'd have to find out if there's any morning care for the youngest of our students. I'm not sure there is.
Right. It's just a question that had come.
Yep.
Where the drop-off time used to be earlier for preschool, the older kid went, kiddo went to Alphabet or whatever, and then.
Yeah.
Younger one went to preschool. Again, as people transition out of grade, kind of the need changes, but that came out. And then with the communication, I know you said over-communication, just making sure that it's consistent, even if it's one message that everyone's getting, so that if I'm a parent and I have a student in multiple different schools, it's not five different emails that are coming out, that maybe it's just a clear, we've talked about communication.
Links to maybe all of them, you can pick the one you need.
Yeah, something that is just, instead, you know, if I've got a kid in a couple of schools, that's a lot of emails with maybe different language, different verbiage, a clear message would just, you know, concise, consistent message from all might be a little bit easier.
Okay.
That's it. Sorry.
No, that's great.
It's a busy time.
Yeah. No, and I, my, my only comment is, you know, I'm very empathetic to the resident that spoke here tonight, and an understanding that, you know, schedule changes are challenging and difficult, but also recognizing that the schedule change has a lot of positive impacts for the district overall. It has a lot of positive impacts for a lot of families for different reasons, but I'd like to think that, you know, there will be accommodations that if, you know, families like this one were to reach out to, whether it be the special ed director, the principal, you, to work with this family or other families like this.
And it's typical, when, when even with a new registration, that a schedule may have existed in that child's life prior to coming to our school, and we work with that family and, and while that adjustment is being made. And what I mean is, you know, no child is penalized if they have to be dismissed until they get, or have the time to make a change in an appointment. And certainly, our people will help work and, and help a family and support them in making those changes if they need.
Okay. So hopefully, if families are, you know, following along tonight, that, that's something that they'll do, is they'll reach out if they have concerns. But yeah, I appreciate the work on this. So I look forward to the alignment of some of these schools to see if this makes a difference in the town.
And this will require a roll-call vote of the committee.
Sure.
Madam Chair.
I'll make a motion to approve the school calendar as presented this evening for the 24-25 school year.
I'll second.
Okay. Motion is second, and to approve the calendar, both front and back pages tonight. Mr. Moncada, how do you vote?
Aye.
Mrs. Anderson?
Aye.
Mr. Russo?
Aye.
Mrs. Bea Joni Smith?
Aye.
Okay, and the chair will say as well, and that's a unanimous vote. Thank you very much. And we can move on to our next item is for the school committee meeting dates.
Ooh. Or is it our register periods first?
Register periods.
Yeah.
Register periods, sorry. So I'll take that. That'll be C. Don't worry, isn't your packet, you have the proposed register periods. The district continues to support semesters for kindergarten, trimesters for grades one through four, and quarters for grades five through 12. The registered periods just have been adjusted for the 24-25 school calendar year, but the registered periods do require a roll-call vote. Okay, any questions or comments?
Just, just logistically, and I know we moved to trimesters last year, I think that was led by Ms. McDermott last year. How, how much of a heavy lift, I mean, it used to be everyone was on four terms.
Right.
And now it's, we got one going semester, one going, like, I'm just trying to, it's probably not so much for staff in the building, although I guess Doing and Heathbrook maybe, because you got kindergarten in first grade, and so they're on two different sort of schedules, register periods, if you will. Five through 12, obviously not, because those are full schools, right, that are on the same, and I suppose even the Center School, all on the same. How, how much of a heavy lift is this for you guys, maybe in central office, or even staff in the, is it, is it a pain in the neck? No?
No.
Okay.
And you'll notice the two semesters in kindergarten line up with the split of the four.
With the split, okay, right.
We have a lot of balls in the air, right? We're studying our facilities.
Yeah.
We'll be studying all of those grade configurations. When you say, is it a heavy lift, there may be an impact to the register periods based on any grades moving. And we know that that conversation is ahead, we're not there yet. But in also fifth grade and sixth grade, maybe looking at a standards-based report card in a trimester. So there's a lot of what-ifs. And then, you know, if a grade should move. So it's all ongoing as part of the discussion. But no, from a logistical standpoint, it's harder probably for people to get used to a trimester than when they had the four terms.
Sure.
They've had a year of that. I hope it's not too tedious for parents going from, going into that next year. But, you know, we're living with it. As professionals, we're okay with it. It's all in Aspen. Our teachers are notified when those due dates are, and principals, actually, they tweaked this a little tighter this year. I thought you were going to ask me, why are the days not exactly equal in every register?
No, 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 I know why that is.
You know why that is. And sometimes we have to move this by a day if we should get really socked in one particular month. And we'll bring that back to you, but.
Yeah, yeah. Okay.
Ms. Anderson?
I'm good, thank you.
Thank you.
Will this be posted on the website?
Yes, yes. Both will, the calendar along with the register periods as soon as we, as soon as we can. Ms. Johnson, am I speaking out of turn? We post the register periods on Aspen. Is that what we do, through Aspen?
Both places.
Okay.
So we have the calendar.
Great, thank you.
So I will make a motion then to approve the register periods for 24-25 school years presented this evening.
I'll second. So we have a motion by Mr. Russo, second by Ms. Bea Joni Smith, to approve 24-25 register periods. And that would be for all three. That would be the grades K, grades one through four, and grades five through 12. Mr. Moncada, how do you vote?
Aye.
Ms. Anderson?
Aye.
Ms. Russo?
Aye.
And Ms. Bea Joni Smith?
Aye.
And I vote aye as well. So that passes unanimously. Great. And now we go on to the school committee meeting dates, which we've looked at a couple of times.
Madam Chair, if I might, through you, this is an update to the dates that we prepared for you and that you looked at at the last meeting. The difference here is, and through your request, Mr. Russo, we've now aligned these to be with the school year versus a calendar year. I think it probably makes sense, and it was a great suggestion. I do want to make mention of a conflict that happens in March, both for myself, for two Wednesdays in March, myself, Assistant Superintendent Anne, the Chair of the Committee, which would be March 5th and 12th. So there is a consideration here to potentially have our March meeting either the 4th or the 11th. And I offer this option. We have not been able to identify what the Select Board meeting is in March of 2025 yet. So if we leave both of these as an or or to be determined, we can get that information before thinking about March. We just didn't have that date available, so it's either or, if you're amenable to a Tuesday meeting.
And, and Madam Chair, through you, is March 19th?
There is also the 19th, pushes us a little late.
Just to keep it on the, or is there any consideration as to?
That would put out, that would be far.
Three weeks. Well, I mean, yeah, you have the school vacation week in February.
And we have two in April.
Two in April, right, right.
It is a budget hearing meeting.
Yeah.
So I mean, later could be better, too. I'd have to defer to Dave on that.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's all fine.
It's all fine.
I don't know my schedule next week, so.
Yeah, 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 yeah.
Sure, I'll be good.
So is the, is the thinking that we would just leave this open for March at the moment to potentially the 4th or the 11th until the Select Board approves their calendar at some future date?
Ms. Johnson will be reaching out tomorrow to, to
I don't know when the Select Board approves.
I don't know if they have it set yet. And if we don't know, we could leave it TBD.
Yeah.
We could pick a date. We could always alter it. It really is your decision.
I'm agnostic, honestly. I mean, I just, depending on when the Select Board makes their decision, I just, I wouldn't want to leave this hanging until February. It's like, you know what I mean?
Right.
That's all I would ask.
So, I mean, we could consider revisiting this in the fall.
Yeah, maybe after this. And then just one other sort of housekeeping thing. So I noticed all the start times are generally 5:30. There's the one in January that's starting at 5:00. I didn't know if that was just an oversight, or if that, we're starting earlier for a particular reason.
January 8th, maybe?
January 8th, yeah.
I didn't notice that.
Okay. Just wasn't sure. Maybe, maybe it just makes sense to leave it at 5:30, just to be consistent, just so there's no confusion. I know the 4:30 budget workshop later in January, I know that we were doing that earlier because it was just the one topic.
No, I'm not sure why. Maybe that was just transcribed from a previous calendar or something.
Okay.
And that's the same with the March 5th, with the public hearing budget?
Yeah, and that makes sense. We've always done that a half hour earlier when we've combined the two. So that, that makes sense to me. Same thing in February.
All right. So maybe we can change that January 8th to 5:30. And we'll just, and then consider leaving the March 5th with the March date to be determined and to revisit that in either, let's say, October or November meeting.
But wouldn't we need a public hearing on the budget in January? Maybe that's why it said 5:00?
We have it January 29th.
So...
And we did that separate, I think intentionally.
Okay.
For the first one.
For the first one, right.
4:30 and 5:30, or 5:30 and 5:00, which are we looking at?
The January 8th.
Right. Are we looking at a 5:30 start for the meeting?
For January 8th.
It's a regular meeting, so yeah, it should be.
You want a 4:30 budget workshop or a 5 o'clock?
4:30 is fine.
4:30 is fine.
Okay.
So, Madam Chair, then are you looking to approve this as is with those two changes? One March to be determined, and then the January 8th time to be added to 5:30?
I think so. January 8th changed to 5:30, and then the March TBD, we revisit in October, November.
So then I'll make a motion to approve the school committee meeting calendar for the 24-25 school year pending those two changes that will revisit at a later date.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
To approve as written, the January 8th changed to 5:30, and a March TBD to revisit in October, November. In favor, please say aye.
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 Approved as such.
I was very excited.
Now look at this one more time. All right. And that brings us to E, the FY24 Final Expenditure Summary and Budget Transfer Vote. Ms. Libby?
Yeah, so it's in your, in our agenda packet. I've kind of packaged it a couple different ways. The summary page, which is summarized by Cost Center, and then the line item account level detail, which would be inclusive of this transfer. And then I tried to summarize the transfer into the three major categories that we have that could approve at town meeting. Capital Outlay, Salary and Operating, and the accounts that increased, which accounts were decreasing, and then totals of those within those categories. This is sort of a finish to that exercise we did in June where our town accountant works with us. He liked to see our, our final numbers stay within each of those categories as approved at town meeting each year. He's fine if we do it with journal entries or budget transfers. So, and this also, I was trying to, at the same time, move some money into areas where we saw some budget deficiencies and take from some areas where we had budget surpluses. So, sort of doing, killing two birds with one stone here, and put a brief explanation in the comment section as to what led to the shortage or the overage in each of the account, each of the accounts that I'm looking to change. A lot of them are related, some of them are standalone, but again, this doesn't impact our overall budget. It just sort of realigns the budget to match up better with our actual spending. It doesn't get us to 100% on each account, at each account level. I was just trying to get the major items cleaned up, where we had major shortages or major surpluses. Tried to tackle those first and get those more in line with, with our end-of-the-year reporting.
I think it's worth noting, Ms. Libby, what our balance ended up at the end of the year, how close we were.
I know. Pretty good.
It's a tight budget.
Yeah, we try to, try to spend everything we got.
All right, any questions?
I'll just, one, I just want to say thank you for consistently updating us each quarter. I think this is a fantastic way to look at it from both a summarized view. I second your comments, Regan, about how tight this budget is and how efficient we try to make it. So, thank you and kudos to you guys for managing that appropriately.
Of course, thank you.
Yeah.
Ms. Moncada?
Good, yeah, thank you.
I'm good, thank you.
No questions?
Thank you.
Yeah. Yeah, Ms. Libby, you did a great job. Ms. Terry O'Regan, the same. I think this was a hard year. I think a lot of unexpected, unanticipated expenses that came your way the end of the year. And you were masterful in terms of how you managed some of those expenses. So, thank you. I think some difficult decisions had to be made, and you did a good job. Thank you.
Thank you.
Moving on to our superintendent evaluation.
Would that require a vote?
Oh, what's the vote?
Does require a vote, yes.
Goodness, sorry, sir.
Budget transfer.
Sorry.
Oh, the transfer, okay.
Yeah, I'll make a motion to approve the budget transfer as presented this evening.
I'll second.
Does it have our total, though?
It's just taking from one to the other. So there's no, there's no financial impact.
There's no specifics that we're, that we're highlighting?
Nope.
All right.
No. So we have a motion. Ms. Anderson, second.
So we have a motion by Mr. Russo, second by Ms. Anderson. Mr. Moncada, how do you vote?
Aye.
Ms. Anderson?
Aye.
Mr. Russo?
Aye.
Ms. Bea Joni Smith?
Aye.
And I vote aye as well. All right, thank you very much. Yeah, I guess I'll move it to this. Okay. Okay, so we're moving on to our review. So just as an introduction, as defined by the Massachusetts Department of Elementary and Secondary Education, it's the responsibility of the school committee to review the superintendent and their practice annually. The role of the school committee is to, is governance rather than management. The committee as evaluator is composed of multiple individuals rather than a single evaluator. The focus of the school committee is to focus on the outcome of a superintendent's work rather than the details of the implementation. The superintendent's evaluation is the only educator evaluation conducted in public. So this is a little bit long, but just bear with me. This is the End Cycle Summit of Evaluation Report using the DESI End Cycle Summit of Evaluation for the Superintendent Brenda Terry O'Regan. It's presented tonight at the Tewksbury Public Schools Regular School Committee Meeting on July 24, 2024. The Tewksbury School Committee reviewed Superintendent Terry O'Regan's goals from August 2023 that were presented in open session in her year-end gold evidence. The five members of the committee utilized the Department of Education and Secondary Education's Evaluation Report for End of Cycle Summit of Evaluation Report for the superintendent and the Indicator Rubric for superintendent to evaluate the superintendent's practice and progress. Brenda, in assessing your performance goals, professional practice, student learning, district improvement goals, and the committee identified that you have met these performance goals, in the four identified standards of effective administrative leadership, instructional leadership, management and operations, family and community engagement, and professional culture, the committee scored you proficient. The committee also unanimously credits your overall summative performance rating to be in the proficient range. Brenda, the committee found that you have made satisfactory advancement towards meeting or have met the goals established for the 2023-24 school year. You nurture and model a culture in which all staff members are reflective about their practice, they apply current research, use best practices in theory, and apply data-driven decision-making. You continue to develop and maintain the progress made on these goals while integrating them into the culture of the Tewksbury School District. District goals have been at the forefront of your decision-making throughout the school year, and it is clear that stakeholders are informed and engaged throughout the various stages of engagement. Brenda, you have received positive feedback in the area of staff development and personal growth. The committee recognizes your work in supporting staff with oversight, providing more differentiated professional development. You are recognized for your own self-reflection of your leadership practice in order to develop new approaches to improve overall district effectiveness, to improve student achievement. Committee members unanimously agreed that communication concerns identified last cycle have improved, and through you, various stakeholders have aligned their communication to also be more consistent and reliable. The committee appreciates your availability and engagement with staff, families, union leaders, district leadership, and the community at large. Messaging to families has improved with the initiation of a district social media page, consistent district level, school level, and staff newsletters. Solicitation of feedback from various stakeholders to inform district decisions, such as student listenings and targeted surveys, is appreciated. In the area of fiscal systems, you have received the support of the committee in your outstanding municipal fiscal stewardship. You have demonstrated a collaborative relationship with the business manager, the town manager, and have communicated consistently as a needed, as needed, with full transparency and accountability to the committee and the community. You have led the administrative team to develop a district budget aligned with the district's vision, mission, and goals that address the needs of the students. You are appreciated for seeking alternative funding sources as needed. Finally, you prioritize the school buildings and facility management to assure long-term use and function of our schools. You are forward-thinking and working with the committee this year in requesting the formation of a community-based school-building committee to review the viability and potential uses for the schools based on the current and future enrollment and educational programming needs of the students in Tewksbury. Some considerations expressed from the committee that you may choose to include in next year's goal setting. In Management and Operations, plans for the rightsizing of our schools and preparing for the long term with regards to maintaining the staffing needs throughout our schools to best support our students. Rightsizing the DLT, succession planning for the future, critical strategic mentorship, and planning for the future leaders. Mental health and well-being. Enhanced growth in developing a robust and impactful approach to addressing and educating staff and addressing the needs of students and staff on mental health and well-being. Communication. The committee continues to encourage consistent promotion and communication with the community overall, to include messaging of curriculum opportunities at all grade levels, to the achievements of students and staff members, and to promote matters of interest in the district overall. To facilitate a district-wide culture, taking a proactive approach with the communication of new initiatives or changes in policies or expectations, especially when families may require additional information, engagement, or consideration. Timed communication with district information to the community to avoid the community from being confused by rumors or misinformation, and to consider expanding student and family listening groups to include more diverse voices in the school community, and to possibly consider regular and consistent staff, family, and student surveys. Brenda, it has been a pleasure to work with you this year. Thank you for all that you are doing to move the district forward, especially for being ever mindful of the resources that the residents of Tewksbury have entrusted you to carefully allocate in the best interest of students. We look forward to our meeting in August and for the district retreat, and I'm ready to begin planning for next year.
Thank you very much.
So this is on behalf of the entire committee. Thank you. Any questions, comments from everyone?
I think you said it very well, Bridget.
Well, we said it. I just put it together. Mr. Moncada?
Yeah, thank you, and I appreciate all that you do for the, you know, the town, the students, staff, everybody. It's appreciated, so thank you.
Mrs. Anderson?
Yeah, and I think that we provide a lot of feedback, and you, you take that feedback and you run with it, so we appreciate that as well.
I know, I know, Ms. Regan, you're going to say, the work is not done, because you never, you know, it's, no, and honestly, that's one of the things I appreciate you about the most, is that you're constantly adapting, pivoting when needed, when need to, and you base that on feedback that you're hearing, whether it's from this committee, whether it's from staff, whether it's from your leadership team, or families out there. And so that's, it doesn't go unnoticed, it's appreciated, and again, the work isn't done. So I know that we're gonna, we have another full year ahead of us coming up.
Yeah, you do. Bea Joni Smith?
Thank you. I mean, I echo what my committee members are saying. The whole theory of having an open door policy, I don't think I've ever met someone who has a wide open door. You listen to every single person who walks through there, sends an email, makes a phone call, and I respect that. If something comes through the committee and gets passed along to you, I have no worries that that will be followed up upon and managed as needed. I need not to worry that I got something that I feel like I can't hand off without knowing that it'll be followed through to fruition. So I appreciate that, and thank you for all of your work and the dedication to the district.
Thank you.
You're very welcome.
It's, it's, you can imagine, interesting to sit here and hear the feedback. And you know just how privileged and proud I am to serve the community and have that open door. I understand what my role is, and I understand we're never done. And the community's needs, the students' needs, your needs, is what I'm here for. I appreciate the targeted feedback as well, because, first of all, any positive feedback that I've received, you know I've always said this, is for the whole team. I lead a team, and the work can't get done without the whole team, including a supportive school committee. We can't make the progress we need to do if we're not all pulling in the same direction. And that's what I'm most proud of this year, is really that focus. The feedback you've given me in, through this evaluation, we're already even talking about in meeting our goals further. So I feel like we're really aligned on the progress and then the future needs, and I'm always looking forward to whatever input you can give that gives us more insight to do it better. So I look forward with, to growing with the committee, and I thank you for your attention to this. I know I served you up a whole lot of evidence to go through, and I appreciate that you did that, and really gave me valuable feedback to move forward.
Thank you. I appreciate the, the evidence, it was great. It was, it was a lot of evidence, for sure. But, I mean, the most appreciative piece, though, is that you don't hold back. You know, you share the good, you show what's not so good. And, you know, even in these meetings, you know, we've had some difficult conversations regarding data that none of us are happy about.
Right.
And, but the conversations are always about, you know, how, how could we move forward? So I appreciate that, and, you know, it's been a good year and a challenging year. And I look forward to a better year than we had even this year, so.
Thank you.
Yeah, okay. So some school committee, oh, yeah, school committee matters of interest.
I don't, I should take the summer off.
I am also taking the summer off, thank you.
I hope everyone's having a great summer.
Well, I don't, I didn't take the summer off. We actually, none of us did, because we met here, I wanted to just share. We met here as a committee. We had a workshop just prior to this meeting to talk about our goals, our school committee goals, and which we formulated last year for the first time. We chatted about them in a very informal, open session. I appreciated the conversation that we all had. I think it looks like we're kind of staying true to what some of those goals were. We had some nice dialogue about how we could kind of fine-tune those moving forward. And it looks like we'll have something to present possibly next month or the month after. So I just want to share that out kind of formally in the meeting. Other than that, no, I don't really have a whole lot more to share. Future school committee meeting dates. We have August 14th, which will be preceded by the district retreat, September 18th. Future Subcommittee and Advisory Committee meeting dates. The CPAC Business Meeting, you said, was the 19th of September. Wellness, you said, was October?
24.
24th. And then, oh, it's on here. Policy Subcommittee Meeting, that's to be determined, we haven't planned that yet. Future agenda items, anything anybody has to add? Other than looking towards maybe October, November, discussing our March date? That's the only thing I can think of. And then, is there a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
I'll second. By Rich, second by Mrs. Bea Joni Smith. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Adjourn at 8:06 PM.